The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking, First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Morin, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
We have a motion in second to approve the statement of revenue and expenses by the city clerk. Roll call, any questions?
I got a question, but I'm just not going to determine whether I vote for it. But why is the corporate center utility so much? Why are they so high?
Well, the school's been using it.
Okay.
I mean, they've been using it for this last semester.
Okay, I got you.
And you know, bills run a month behind them.
Yeah, okay. I forgot about the month behind thing, thanks.
Okay, we'll have a roll call. Vote please. Alderman Tollfree?
Yes.
Alderman Marshall?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Henderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fraser?
Yes.
Alderman Burks?
Yes.
And you should have a copy of your cash balances for the month of June. Okay, for our city sales and use tax for the month of June, we received $84,437.09 for a year-to-date total of $471,370.13, and we're up a 6% from this time last year. The county received $59,411.71 for a year-to-date total of $329,954.04, and county taxes are 90% from last year, this time last year. And you should also have a copy of your June report for the Fifth Circuit Court. And a second court overtime report as well. This is my report. Thank you ma'am. The mayor's report is short and sweet. We'd like to reappoint Mr. Chuck Cannon to the planning commission. His term is up.
I move that Chuck Cannon be reappointed.
Second. A motion in second to reappoint Mr. Chuck Cannon to the planning commission. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote please. Alderman Tollfree?
Yes.
Alderman Marshall?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Henderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fraser?
Yes.
Yes.
And you have the contract for the South Arkansas Fair and Market Association's request, something they're having the fair this year, getting back to a little bit of normal, so what's the pledger of the council.
I move that we approve the contract for $1,500.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion in a second to approve the contract with the South Arkansas Fair and Market Association for $1,500. Is there any questions in discussion? If not, roll call vote please. Alderman Tollfree?
Yes.
Alderman Marshall?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Henderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fraser?
Yes.
And Alderman Burks?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes my report. Now we're ready for public comments. Is there any alderman that has someone to recognize? We do have two people that have signed the name to speak. We'll start with Ms. Cameron Johnson. You're welcome to come in here, Cameron.
Good shit. Go to that one.
I'm the speaker. Hug me.
My name is Cameron Johnson, and I'm with Make One Shine. We've been doing this for three years now, and it's just a bunch of, we call it a bunch of old ladies that are trying to make things better here in Illinois. I have a passion for more, not only me, but there's a lot of other people that do too. And there's something that I want to discuss with everybody tonight about, that's really been bothering me. It's disturbing for me to say that it's a very nation of our streets. We have the ability and means for proper maintenance and repairs, and I would like to see those done properly. I'm just one person, but I think I'm speaking for a lot of people. It is our responsibility as, to preserve these for future generations. Now, what I'm talking about is our town too, but I'm talking about our brick streets. There are 502 cities and towns in Arkansas, and out of those 502 towns, there is only seven of them that have brick streets. So I feel like one is pretty special to have, to be in that group, to be honest with you. And we aren't doing a very good job as stewards over these streets. They are only register of historic places, so there's portions of them, there's portions of brick streets on Cedar, Walnut, Myrtle, Chesna, and Cypress. And I feel privileged that I have a building on Cedar Street. I feel like that would be a selling point to one side. It should be a selling point. Now, we have Elm Street, it's not in that greater, the houses are not in that, but it should be. People should be looking at Elm Street and thinking, what a nice street that could be if I bought this house, redid it, and the next people bought the next one, and I would be living on a brick street, a historic street. Portions of, let's see, according to the Arkansas program of historic places, they are rare, and they have survived from the 20th century. These are old streets, have been around a long time, and they're really in still in pretty good shape. These streets should be one of our greatest assets and should be respected as such. These precious streets have overgrown grass, patches with concrete and asphalt. This is unacceptable to the preservation of these brick streets. I hope by me speaking on this tonight, that it would ignite a passion in all of you also to fix the problem that we have with our brick streets, and that we can pass this on to the next generation. That's all. And I'd like for y'all to look at the pictures that I've taken for y'all, the patchwork and the grass and the tidiness of our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next one to speak is Ms. Sharon Valentin.
I hope all of you got one of these. We have them on the table, pass out. We are, like Pam said, little old ladies that are Make One Shine, and we are entered into a contest that we did in 2019. It's sponsored by Shelter Insurance. This big flag mural that we have right up here is how we were able to purchase that, have that painted, is through this same contest. So please pass the word, tell people, please vote. We only have over 200, and in 2019, we had 600 votes. So we're just asking people to please get the word out and vote, so we can do some more for our community that we love. Thank you.
Thank you. You just go online and vote, it's a very easy process.
How long is the voting open?
It's open until August the 20th.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's a very easy process to do. I'll make, place my vote. Okay, we will leave now.
No, you don't have to correct it. No, you have to correct it.
Yes, yes.
What, now, what year those picks was put out?
1927.
Okay. Looks like there'd be grants, federal grants, if they were historic, I mean, since they're on historical basis. So, I'll look into that.
I would imagine, Mr. Reed, those are some pretty hard-working men that put that down there.
It's all done by hand.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. You know who the folks that did it are.
Okay, now then.
Now, there's more brick streets than there are, see, because a whole lot of these brick streets need overlaying.
Right. We probably won't see brick streets in front of Sonic for another 40 years. I hope y'all saw those brick streets under that.
When they stripped all of it up.
All right, let's move into our reports, and I'm going to ask our fire chief to come in first, he's going to change it up a little bit. He's got a meeting with the volunteer firefighters, and he's got a company in town to do some training, so Chief Hayes, if you'll give your report first.
The Warren Fire Department had 10 calls for last month, month of June, so none of which were toned out. They were all handled in-house. No major fires or wreck. We had our monthly meeting last month at the fire department, and then, as you know, the building down there is complete with the exception of the lathering on the front. We're in the middle of trying to get good pricing for the, all the lathering, and then that'll be completely done. We had a group with Emmanuel Baptist Church that came in and wanted to help with painting the fire hydrants. Their group came in, I think they've done like 100 hydrants so far. We're taking a little break right now, doing vacation, going to school, and then we've got to start getting back together at the end of next month. And the fire department would join them and try to get all of them completed by the end of the year. And then, the only other thing I had was, thank you guys, attending the two firemen to convention. That was good for everyone to go to.
It was you and?
Me and Jason Bradley.
Anybody have any questions of Chief Hayes? Anything more, Chairman of the Fire Department, Mr. Tollfree?
Linda, just stand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you can proceed to your other meeting. Now then, Chief Hildreth? Can you hear me?
Please come in.
Okay.
Good evening. I believe you guys have a copy of our monthly report. Not too much to shame before we met last meeting. Of course, we have hired another certified officer on June 11. As far as the personnel and equipment, I'd say we're just four weeks closer to the officers graduating from the academy, if they have two and a half weeks left. Also, maybe our officer returning back on medical leave, that can help us out, because I feel we've been short-staffed, most majority of the summer. Time is running down, so we should keep some officers back, get them to leave the training. Pretty much all the other information before you get off the floor.
Hey, is a new clerk coming in?
No.
Where?
Still waiting, still waiting.
At least your vehicle records did, it's good. Yeah. It's your fault, ma'am.
Do you want to address the, they have on your agenda, because we didn't get it off about the hire.
Oh, yes, the agenda about the hire of the certified officer that's listed on the agenda, he will not be coming to work for us, although he was hired. He got a better opportunity somewhere else, or something of that nature, to go to a different place to work. So I wouldn't want to be hired, so that's not his specialty, or anything like that. I don't know if he's on the agenda, so.
So you need to come in the office, ma'am?
Well, that number's tricky. We've got the six short into the academy and the amendment, so right now, the number that we need, we're too short right now. We're down six to the medical school.
Is there any other questions of the chief? Anything to add, Alderman Fraser?
We didn't, no, we didn't meet.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right, sanitation, Mr. May.
For our sanitation, we've got all of our trash trucks back up and running. Have a couple people on vacation this week, I'm also short. One CDL operator slash supervisor that resigned two weeks ago due to health issues, so we're back to six days to go. Class A CDL position, I've got one applicant so far, I've got a gentleman that called me this afternoon that would like to pick up an application, so maybe we'll get a few more and be able to put some way back to work. Anybody have any questions on sanitation?
I wanted to ask a question about last month, you, for them, I'm.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You can talk, you can ask him after, after the meeting, you can, you can ask Mike. Okay, anybody on the Alderman Burks, do you have anything to add?
No.
All right, there was a sanitation meeting, right? Okay, Alderman Marshall, would you like to report out on that, please, ma'am?
I will. Okay, on last Thursday, July the 8th, we had a sanitation meeting here in the chamber office, with myself, Mike May, and Charlotte Brown in attendance, and the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the private property and other unsightly properties within the city limits to be able to clean up. We reviewed the current city ordinance, and each council person, you have a copy of the ordinance, if you want to refer to that. The current city ordinance is number 784, one that we used to deal with weeds. And we reviewed the ordinance to deal with conditions of said property. We would like to make them, we would like to amend the current ordinance of section 84, which reads as follows. The lien provided for in section 2 may be enforced at any time within 18 months after work has been done by action in the circuit court. In addition, violation of this ordinance shall be punishable by a fine of not less than $25, nor more than $250. That's how it reads currently. We would like to amend this to read as follows. For section 4, criminal penalties, any person violating any provision of this ordinance shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor or, and upon conviction thereof, shall be fined in the amount of not less than $25, nor more than $250. Each day such violation is committed or permitted to continue shall constitute a separate offense and shall be punishable as such herein to. We feel this addition is necessary to hold each party responsible for the upheaval of their property and the appearance of our city.
Any questions?
Is that a motion, Alderman Marshall?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I will second your motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor to amend ordinance number 784, and we will have all of that ready at the next council meeting, so you can read it again. Is there any more discussion on that? If not, roll call vote, please, clerk. Alderman Tollfree?
Yes.
Alderman Marshall?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Henderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fraser?
Yes.
Alderman Burks?
Yes.
Okay, it passes, and so we will get that written up for official amendment to that ordinance. While we're still on sanitation, do you have any documentation from the surrounding cities of what their salaries are for their workers?
This is something I put together, a part portion of this documentation for pay for the surrounding cities.
I'll get it.
There you go. As you can see, we're a little bit over a dollar behind on our class A drivers, as far as what the surrounding cities, some are $2, $3 behind.
$2 to $3 behind.
Some of them are paying $14, $15 an hour. We're currently paying entry fee of $12.06, I believe is what it is for our entry CDL license, and most of them are $13 to $15 an hour.
And these cities are McGee, Demas, Croset, DeQueen, and Monticello.
Yes, ma'am, they're similar in size and population too.
So we're pretty close to the ones in our area, McGee, Demas, Monticello, Croset. Are we a dollar off some places, or less, it looks like less than a dollar, right?
Well, our entry fee, our entry for CDL is $12 an hour now, and most, most of your cities are starting out $13 to $14 an hour, so we're about a dollar off.
I think it's definitely something we should take a look at.
Well, we got to look at the tax gap and stuff anyway, but it's hard to, the first applicant that we had is, is somebody that's currently in the garbage industry in another location, the municipality, and he's currently making $13.85 an hour. Now, he did apply for us, I don't know, we haven't done a background check once, so I don't know if there's any underlying issues or anything, but, and he may not know what we pay, so it's just, it's difficult to get, the last time it took us almost eight months when we lost the driver to rehire somebody. So I just don't want to see, predict anymore, we can't get quality help because we, not necessarily quality help, but somebody who's got a license to drive across, because of the pay.
So where are you on the insurance as well with your other cities?
On the insurance?
Yes.
As far as vehicle insurance?
No, 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 health insurance.
Health insurance. Well, I didn't check that.
But, I mean, we do provide benefits.
The city pays probably 90% of our health insurance. I didn't check the other cities, but, sorry, I really can't comment on what their benefits package is.
But I think it's something there, mostly there is, what else is contributing to, like McGee, Demas, all these, there's a smaller population, what more they have going on, what other tax base they have.
Are you saying in addition to the salary and?
I mean, what, what is generated into the city to get their salaries, these individuals' salaries, is it because they have package stores?
We don't know how many drivers they hire, or employees they have, or, I mean, what is it, Mr. Zach?
I have to, I'm just thinking of.
I mean, it's something that we need, we need to definitely look at.
For sure.
Because they're, they're valued employees.
Yeah, try to, yeah. I remember saying that when we gave the police the, I mean, everybody else, you know, right, we can't go without sanitation anymore, they're very important.
Now, that's something that we do appreciate, and we're looking to.
I definitely will.
Thank you. I think we want to move to the building, which you chose.
All right, building codes, we do have one lot that I'd like the council to consider for condemnation. It's 506 York Street. It's evidently the owner of the property does a lot of carport sales and things like that, and his yard is just littered from one end to the other with all the things, washing machines, dryers, torches, just anything you can think of. Now, I have spoken to the person that owns the property, and he assures me that he's going to clean it up, but if we go ahead and condemn it, I have a stick of time that I can hold over his head and say, if you don't do it by X amount of time, then we will come in and assist you in cleaning it, so I'd like to recommend that lot, or a lot cleanup on it.
Have we addressed him before?
We have addressed him, it's been about four years ago, and he did do a fairly decent job last time of cleaning it up. He didn't leave two trucks in his yard, but he got rid of most everything, but it is three times as much now as what it used to be, so it's, it's really bad.
What was the address again, 50?
506 York Street.
I made the motion that we have a condemnation for lot cleaned up?
Lot cleaned up, 506 York.
506 York Street.
Second. Motion in second for a lot cleanup at 506, a condemnation and lot cleanup at 506 York Street. Is there any other discussion? If not, then, Ms. Clerk, will you do a roll call vote? Alderman Tollfree?
Yes.
Alderman Marshall?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Henderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fraser?
Yes.
Alderman Burks?
Yes.
Okay, it passes, and so we've got that. Is there anything else of Mr. May?
I've got a question. How much does, I know it depends on what's on the lot, and how, how much does an average, what's the minimum, or, not minimum, but the average cost of condemnation, cleaning up something?
When I first started here, a structure was about $1,500 to $2,000, had taken down. Now it runs around $3,350, just a typical-sized house. On the lot cleanup itself, it usually runs $750 to $1,000, something like that, to get it very cleaned up and called off.
Okay. I was just wondering, that's a.
No, I watched him.
A $250 fine is a drop in the bucket compared to what it costs?
Well, as the ordinance is written now, $250 one-time fine is a drop in the bucket. However.
When we update it.
When it gets updated, that will be per day, after the judge deems them guilty.
Right.
I'll have to carry them to court, write them a ticket, carry them to court. It'll be 200, could be up to $250 per day for every day that they don't get cleaned up, so it can run into some pretty good hefty fees.
For sure.
It's just an extra layer of tool. It's just an extra layer of tools that we have to use besides the condemnation process. We can also carry them to court and try to penalize them monetarily.
Anything else? If not, thank you, sir. And now we'll have our third woman, Mr. Davis.
Right now, we're trying to get grass cut in places with all the lots that we cut. Some parts of the airport, we had to do some work down there, and been putting in several covets for people. We've got two put in this week. And we're working on the covets on cleaning, started this morning.
King Street, I'm sorry. So what about York Street where the water department had to cut that?
You had to talk to them, they want us to pave it whenever we get a paving crew here.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't...
Yeah, that's, that's what the deal is right now, the water department's gonna pay to have it done, but they're gonna wait till we get the contractor in.
Makes sense, yeah, okay.
And I know the rain causes issues, for sure. Is there anything else, Ms. Mosley, do you have anything to report?
We met, and I can't, do you remember what day it was?
I don't remember.
What afternoon was that, and we're at the meeting. We are in the process of giving prices, of getting the street's measures, so we'll know how much that we're talking about, and then we'll get prices. And there's a covert or two, probably another one that's gonna need to be replaced. We're gonna get prices on that, and then we'll come back to the council board. And I guess we'll have, may have to bid it out, we'll have to get either all of that stuff together and then bid it out. We're working on it.
Alright, if there's nothing else of Mr. Davis, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, now then, the Community and Economic Development Committee. I asked Ms. Marshall to report out to a meeting we had last week at the school, a preview of another meeting, so...
We had a meeting at Sebeck, and it was a very good turnout, a lot of different representation there. The group that is in town that was doing the report on the city of Warren, they came and they went over all the different things that was in the report. Gave an overview of the different citizens that they talked to in different areas. They talked about Main Street, restaurants, lack of restaurants or hours if the restaurants were open, the different businesses, what the street looks like, what the town looks like. They gave an overview of what Warren looks like from the eyes of someone who doesn't live anywhere. And from that, there is going to be a town hall meeting, assembly, that is going to be Thursday, July the twenty-second at five-thirty, it's going to be at the Culture Center. And from this meeting, they are going to go over and do a presentation to the city. So I encourage everyone, if they can, to come out to the town hall assembly on Thursday, July the twenty-second at five-thirty, which is gonna be at the Culture Center.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Alderman Mosley, you were also there, do you have anything to add?
I think she pretty well.
Okay.
It was a very interesting, very interesting meeting, yeah.
Okay, alright. Ways and Means, we have not met yet, but we're getting information collected so that Ms. Henderson can start looking at next year's budget. Okay, now we'll move to the Parks and Recs Commission, Mr. Wagnan.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
There's a lot going on, we're just, we went around trying to get everything sprayed, keep everything mowed, clean at the park and everywhere, and mowed around the pool and everything. Pool's up and running, we have no major issues with it right now. But the main thing, I'm gonna meet with Keith Taylor in the morning down at the city park to finish up all the lights. We got one more little trench to dig, and we're hopefully all finished across that, all the lights will be up and working on the track, so that's the main thing, but we should be done tomorrow around lunch with that. If nothing happens, we'll be good.
Carol, will you report out? I was gonna, in the announcements, I was gonna give kudos to the two teams, and I may mess up exactly the age groups and everything, so would you tell us how well Warren was represented in New Orleans this week, past week?
Yes, ma'am, I think the ten-year baseball team, Run One, they, they finished third in the World Series down in New Orleans, and fourteen, fifteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years, they ended up winning the whole World Series down there, so the Y M C A was very well represented.
And I've already had, reached out to Mr. Ritchie, and hopefully we'll do, when we can, we'll do some type of a little proclamation and recognize the teams, the coaches, the parents, the Y M C A, because that was, that was a tremendous boost to publicity for the town of Warren. And, and of course, those kids, you know, they go through our, our rec system.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Planning Commission did not meet, Aviation Commission did not meet, Water and Sewer, you have their minutes. Housing Commission did not meet, Cultural Center Committee, you've got the cultural report, and that commission will probably be meeting in the next couple of weeks, Ms. Frazier. Is there any unfinished business? Any more public statements of anybody that signed in? Any new business? Announcement, I do want to say, we had a very successful farmer's, first farmer's market this past weekend on the empty lot. All the vendors, we had about seventeen vendors that showed up, all the vendors were very happy, very pleased, and their comments were, when are we gonna do the next one? And so the groups that have, the group that has gotten this all together is a vision coalition out of the Chamber, and then also Home Town Health started the actual research on this several years ago. So we're gonna keep it going as much as we absolutely can. The crowd was tremendous, we had vendors that actually sold out by eleven o'clock. So there'll be another meeting of this group, and we're gonna keep it going as long as we can. As long as the people come out and shop, the vendors will be there. And then, Ms. Marshall has already mentioned the meeting on the twenty-second, I would hope that you will please put it on your calendar. And then, I need a motion to pay the bills for June.
Oh, excuse me, ma'am.
Now?
I see one of the most strongest fellows in this town. Where is that? Ms. Butler. Ms. Jenny Butler. A person who gives all the inspiration to me every day. I just wanted to say, if you're free, would you like to say something, please?
Alright, do I have a motion to pay the bills? I make a motion to pay the bills. A motion and second to pay the June twenty-twenty-one bills. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, please.
No, I mean, yes, I'm sorry.
Alderman Marshall?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Henderson? Alderman Henderson? Alderman Burks? Alderman Frazier?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries. Our next meeting will be in August, August the fifth will be our agenda meeting at seven AM, and the August the ninth at five-thirty will be our regular agenda of City Council meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion, a motion second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye, since Ms. Henderson, I guess. Okay.